Calls order and get started. Notice is hereby given. The Salem School Committee is holding a regular school committee meeting of April 29th, 2024. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227. You can also join via Zoom using the link in the posted agenda below. First order of business is approval of the agenda.
So.
Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, matter carries. Public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. This public comment period will serve as an extension, a continuation of the public hearing on the proposed FY 2025 Salem Public Schools budget. Is there public comment online or signed up? Any member of the in-person attendees?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
All second.
All in favor, all opposed, matter carries. And for approval of the consent agenda, this is the minutes of the school committee meeting of April 8th, 2024, and approval of the warrants of April 11th and April 18th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded.
Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, matter carries. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Before I get started, before we speak about the budget, just a couple of updates. First of all, I just want to thank the folks that had, went to the Dominican Republic with me and Laura Assad. We had a great trip. We had a few educators with us and had an amazing experience, made some important contacts. And I hope it becomes an annual tradition that we can send members of our team. I think it's particularly valuable for people who work in schools to see the experience that our young people have. And, you know, many of our students come from the Dominican. We had a chance to go to Bani, where a lot of our families come from. And we also visited the Ministry of Education, made important contacts in terms of being able to get information from, about families and students when they come here. We know who we can reach out to, to get documents that parents may be struggling to get with. You know, sometimes they move quickly, they don't have access to all the information. And so, and then just the opportunity to meet with students and teachers and get to see, and also we, the access to curriculum materials, which is important, particularly important as we think about culturally relevant and culturally responsive materials that speak to who our kids are. It's open source, and so we have access now to rich curriculum, albeit in Spanish, although we are teaching more and more in Spanish, and especially at Bentley. And sort of access to that material is particularly powerful. And so, hope to continue sponsoring that trip. And we appreciate the Salem Education Foundation, which gave us funding. The district gave some funding for the trip as well, but many of the educators, you know, the educators paid their own way. And so I'm grateful for just the launch. You gotta have, you gotta start somewhere. But now we have the relationships and I think the knowledge of how to do this in the future. And I encourage as many folks to join, to be part of it in the future. A couple of other quick notes that I'd like to, tomorrow, we have a record number of students receiving the seal by literacy at Salem High School. Really excited about the fact that more and more students are taking advantage of that, and not just in Spanish. Everybody thinks that we have Turkish speakers, we have Portuguese speakers, we have Chinese speakers, we have all, in multiple, multiple languages. I didn't count the languages yet. I should have done that. And tomorrow, 8:45 to 9:45, we'll be recognizing those students with the seal by literacy. On Friday, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released official grad rate and dropout rate data for schools for the 2022-23 school year. And because of the work of so many people in the Salem Public Schools across our high schools, we had one of the highest four, well, we've had, we had our highest four-year graduation rate since 1718 at 80.6% across three high schools. Needs to be better. Our goal is 88%, but it's definitely improved. And our dropout rate is the lowest in 10 years, which was at 2.8%. Again, one dropout is two, one dropout too many. But, you know, during the pandemic and just before, we had dropout, you know, more than double that number or close to double that number in dropout rates. So I want to thank the folks that, that made that, that made that data possible and worked so hard to get our students, you know, across the finish line. And then I just want to call out Skills USA, which is the first time Salem has participated in school, Skills USA, which were 2,500 students from across the Commonwealth through the CTE programs. They wear their red jackets. You'll see some photos of that. And we had six young women participate representing Salem High School, very diverse group, and who attended on our behalf. Two of the students, Janay Newton and Yanalee Ventura, have been granted the honor of serving as national voting delegates in the National Leadership and Skills Conference, which will take place in Atlanta, Georgia in June. And so they'll be representing Salem. Again, most CTE programs have been, have been part of this, especially regional vocationals. But for Salem, this is the first time in a long time, I think, that Salem has participated. And the STU will love that red is the color of Skills USA. And so, again, very proud of the students that participated. It is like it's the national convening school, I mean, the statewide convening, and then there's national competitions where you can win awards for your skill set and leadership in different CTE fields and programs. The last thing I'd like to share is because of the Witchcraft Student Voice Project, we had a chance, Ms. Paulie and I and our food service team, to meet with Ms. Burgos, who's a fourth grade teacher there, and Ms. Grimes, who's a paraprofessional, who run the after-school program, the Student Voice Program. And the students really pushed us to be able to let, share recipes, their favorite recipes, and that we'd replicate their recipes in our kitchens. And so we've launched now a opportunity for students to share their favorite recipes. And each month, Food Services will be selecting a recipe to taste test at the school that kids create, not just for witchcraft students, but across the system. And very excited, I'm sure it's going to elevate the, you know, how interesting the food is in the cafeteria as students share their home-cooked recipes and their favorite meals at home. So there's information, we'll be sharing it widely. We want kids to submit their recipes so that we can replicate it in the kitchen. But I, it came from the Student Voice Project, and I really want to thank the witchcraft students who, who were adamant that things could be better in the cafeteria, which I hear all the time. So I appreciate that feedback, and this is one way to do that. And so with that, I think we're going to turn to our budget updates. We have some adjustments to make to the budget that we wanted to share with the school committee before you deliberate or have further questions, if that's okay. Ms. Paulie and I wanted to share the work that we've done last week based on some feedback we've received. So if you could go to the next slide. Elizabeth, you're going to run the show. Okay. Okay, so again, our core priorities are strategic priorities, or we're driving the decisions that we make. Next slide. All right, so I just want to go over the community input. Some of this I shared last week, but we did receive some additional emails. I just want to go over what I've shared with the school committee. The input we received is preserving, about preserving the PE teacher at the ECC. We've received multiple emails about that, and I think it was spoken to at the budget forum. There is a request to fund additional paraprofessionals at the ECC related to, when, when staff are out, there are classrooms that desperately need coverage, and we've gotten a few different emails and input on that. There was some feedback from families about having a Spanish language program across the district, not to just have a dual language program. We do offer Spanish at, at the middle school level, and then Salz has a Spanish teacher that does, has historically done some work in the younger grades, but some, but the push was to have Spanish language at the elementary school level as well. There was feedback about implementing the bus monitoring application, which we are still planning on doing, but because we've changed software, routing software, so there was feedback from parents about that. There were fam, we've heard this from the LPAC as well, considering buying new lockers here at Collins, because the lockers aren't big enough to fit everything that students have. So that's feedback that we received. And then in the, we received some in-person feedback, meeting, met with Elizabeth and I, about clarifying the number of new positions that are actually new versus the number of positions that were funded by Esser and were added to the budget. So making a distinction in the budget book. And there was a request to clarify the average class sizes by grade level in school. At the public comment, next slide, we heard about class sizes. That came up in the public comment. Compensation for educators, I'm just rehashing what you already heard. Additional preparation time for teachers. A request to invest in the parent-child plus and early learning programs was also shared. Request to restore the reading specialist at Carlton and to rethink the elimination of a music teacher role. Reassign the funding to a different, to different needs in the music department. Okay, so our response based on this is we do, we, we are going to preserve the pre-K specialist teacher at the ECC. The reason behind this is, is twofold. I think one is, well, we know that there's some very special qualities about that educator, but, but more importantly, that's important, but also because we, we do recognize that preparation time across the elementary schools is a significant issue. And we, we plan to address that in the near future. But particularly an issue for ECC and the amount of time that teachers have assessing and planning. And, and again, we do know that it's an elementary issue as well, so they also share specialists with Bentley. And so we, we are, you know, in preparation for making some of those adjustments. We definitely need additional staff to provide the preparation time for, for students. And so, and, you know, the importance of having a physical education teacher at that age for our youngest learners is really important. The movement, I mean, last time, any of you have been with three and four-year-olds, you know the importance of movement. And not just three and four-year-olds, I would say, you know, the three and four-year-olds who are in middle school and high school as well. But it's particularly important to have movement at that, at grade level. And so we have funded that using our choice funds, so that doesn't add more to the operating budget, but it, it's consistent with what we've done with our early childhood positions, which is fund them on school choice. Secondly, we are going to preserve a point five of the reading specialist at Carlton and pair that with the new multilingual learning position that's in the budget. So that staff member who's credentialed to do the multilingual learning position and the reading specialist will, can stay in that role, which we think is important, as a staff member with a significant skill set. And, you know, when we have a lot of needs around reading, the idea of eliminating a full-time reading specials is something that we discussed since the budget hearing, and was a concern raised even before that, that that's not the most prudent decision, as we have students who are far behind in their literacy skills. So we decided to preserve that position. I do also want to acknowledge that the, the concern about ECC substitute support is significant. And we, and we've gotten some emails in the last week about that. While the budget is not, we're not ready to add something to the budget, because we need to better understand the specifics around that, whether, there, we're being told that adding a building sub is not enough for that. So we want to, I plan to speak to teachers again over there to better understand the needs. I, I commit that just because the budget gets passed doesn't mean we can't make additional adjustments to address a pain point, which is when, when staff are out or when staff have to do assessments down there, they can not afford, not that teachers can afford not to have a para, but that is a place where not having your paraprofessional is significantly impacts the day. And I've heard that loud and clear from the staff there. So we can, you know, we're, we're committed to addressing that. I think I need more information about exactly what that would look like. They're asking for four additional paraprofessionals. I'm not certain that that's the, the answer, but I do think we have to work with Jen Dusset Lee, the principal, and the teachers there, who have been very thoughtful about their requests. So we will commit to that, even though those positions are not in the budget. But prior to the start of next school year, we have to figure that out. And then clarifying new positions, we did clarify in the budget book. There are revisions in the budget booklet. One of them is we clarified which positions were Esser-funded, that we added to the budget, and which are entirely new positions. And so that was a request, we made that. And we also provided additional information in the budget booklet about class sizes as well, based on the feedback. It's also important that we have that, because there's a lot of discussion about that in negotiations, and we wanted to make sure that that information was publicly available to everybody. The high school's a little bit more complicated, because we're still trying, it's, there's so many different classes of different sizes there, that we're still trying to get a better understanding of like, when we say average class size in the course, what we, what it actually is. So we put average class sizes, but I think we feel like we want to wrap our, our arms around a little bit and provide a little more clear and transparent information about high school class sizes, because they, there's where we see a lot of inequity between very small classes and then larger classes as well. So those are the updates that we have made based, since last Tuesday, when we were here for the budget hearing. And I'm going to pass it over to you, Elizabeth, to give just some final updates as well.
Great, thank you so much. And just, I just have two slides as a reminder. This budget totals $80 million. That is a significant increase over this year and a significant increase over our allocation or our appropriation, excuse me. So we did make those changes that Dr. Zright described. You'll see the revised budget book available online, and I think all the school committee members have it as well. So our personnel costs are $59,510,737. That's a 5% increase over last, or this year. Our non-personnel expenses are where we've seen a big jump with a 17% increase over last year's expenses. So the total comes to over $80 million. And tonight, what we're asking you to do is to approve that our spending in FY '25 will be $80,158,896.50. Of that, our annual appropriation from the city of Salem will be $74,592,616. That's a 4.83% increase, which is a significantly larger increase than what we've seen on average over the last decade. To get to that $80 million, we are relying on reserves and one-time funds. So I do think that's an important story, that we have committed to being nimble and responding to student needs, and also advancing our priorities and values of equity belonging and opportunity. So tonight, the vote we're asking you to take is to approve the $80 million, which includes that appropriation. And once you've had a chance to talk about it, and assuming that you do approve a budget, the next steps are we'll send it to the city for the mayor and the city council to review. Dr. Zright and I will make a presentation to city council later this spring in May or early June. At the same time, the state will continue its budget process. So we're basing all of this on the governor's budget. The House released this budget in early April. That did have a slight bump in Chapter 70, about $40,000 increase in Chapter 70, so that was good news, although the local aid on the city side did not really increase, and in fact, it may have decreased slightly. So the revenue story continues to be a mixed one, although the city of Salem has continued to be very generous to the schools. So the next step at the state level will be the Senate, and then there'll be the Ways and Means, which I'm sure Member Cruz could speak to better than I if there are questions. But the goal is to have an approved budget at the city and the state level by the end of the fiscal year on June 30, so that we can start FY '25 strong on July 1. So that is all that we have brought to you this evening. Dr. Zright, do you want to take?
Yeah, the only thing I just want to add to that is I do, we have a real-life principal sitting here in the room from Salt and Stall, but the other school leaders are on Zoom. In the event that there's specific questions, I think they're there, or most of them should be there. And so, but we just wanted them to be available if there were questions from the committee, for any further questions. I'll turn it over back over to you, Mayor, to see if any other committee members have thoughts or comments.
So we're going to get to new business deliberation and voting on, on the budget, I think. If there's any response, questions people want to address now, we're getting that. If not, we can continue with your report. We'll get into it within.
Not a question so much as a comment. I just wanted to comment on the ECC PE position for a bit. I'm certainly in support of it. I'm glad that it, it appears that we're going to put it back in there, both for the coverage and potential coverage that we may need. But also, not just the coverage issue, you know, being a former specialist, I always take a little umbrage at like specialists provide coverage, and specialists actually provide instruction and have their own frameworks and, you know, standards to meet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm glad that the position, so that everybody, that every little person at the ECC is going to get sufficient movement experience designed by somebody who's in that profession for that age group with whatever abilities or disabilities the students may have. You know, not playtime, not more recess, but actual supportive instruction. As far as the issue of the coverage, though, I, I did sort of lead that life for quite a while. Different age kids, but same issue. The middle school at one point had all seven, seven, there were seven special ed programs here in the building. They were all here. And then when we merged over, the ESL programs were here. And there was never enough coverage, but it was a big staff and a big building, so I could play with it. And I could get, you know, the minimal of coverage that we needed to keep things going. But I can picture the, the issue in a smaller building, where you just don't have the number of people that you can move around. But what I don't want to see happen is the PE person, if there's any extra time, if we don't have the potential for that person to have a full schedule at the very beginning of the year, then we need to find something in the professional category with, where that person contributes, not as a coverage person for team meetings or coverage for absentee people. And, you know, I think we're all hoping that the absentee rate continues to improve among our staff. But I don't, I'm very, very glad to see the position back in. I don't want to see it become covering classes or covering meetings or covering anything else. So I would, I'm going to certainly vote, excuse me, for the budget the way it is, but I would also like to see either that we take a look, because we still have time to look, that we take a look to either perhaps adding a second building sub or adding a floating para, or some, some way to come up with an additional person who it's more, the expectation is more designed that that's where you get the coverage. So glad to see that the position's in, want to see it used as what it's designed to be, but also want to see the coverage issue taken care of. Thanks.
Yeah, can I just respond to that? I think on the, on the cover, on the coverage issue, I think, I don't want to be reckless in making decisions about what staff we add, because I want to be really thoughtful about it. And I do respect, there are many veteran staff at the ECC who are very thoughtful about. But I need to, I think we need to better understand, meaning myself, Jen, and, you know, to better understand what the pain points are, so that we're actually addressing what their real concern is. Because already we said we would add a building sub, and they were, they responded and said that's not what we need. So I want to better understand before we, I make a recommendation, because I would just be making a recommendation out of urgency rather than, or because the budget has to be passed, than do so, than doing so out of, you know, really thoughtfulness and making sure that we're addressing what the real concern is with there. So that's all.
If I could, I'm, I'm not expecting a change this evening, that's what I'm saying. I just.
Yeah, you want to be the report pack.
Be watching out for how we can deal with this as it develops over time.
Sure.
For now, very happy with the PE position back in. I just think we need to be aware that it's an issue that we need to maybe come to some kind of aid for as time goes on and we get more specific numbers, et cetera. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? If not, we're going to have deliberation vote towards the end. We closed the public hearing already. Sorry. This is for the members. None?
Okay. So with that, I would ask that Chris O'Donnell was going to come up and just share some on a very different topic, athletics and alumni, and some steps that we're trying to do to take around engaging, elevating some of our athletics alumni, our athletics work, and then also connecting to just Salem Public Schools alumni as a whole, things that private schools do way better than we, than public schools do. And so we're trying to enhance our profile, and I wanted Chris to just share a brief update with the committee about some work that he's doing with Rich Dornette, who's a very active parent in the Salem Public Schools.
Hi, everyone. For those who I haven't met, my name's Chris O'Donnell. I've been the director of communications since September 18th, the new Liz, people call me. And I have the best job in this district because of these two initiatives, which I've loved working on. So we're trying to expand our community impact through athletics and alumni. And I'll talk about athletics first. So I created two new pages. I created an all-encompassing athletics page. Let me get that up on the screen here. So we created an all-encompassing athletics page. We have a high school athletics page devoted to our high school sports. The page I created has links to our high school page, our Collins Middle School page, and a fun page I created regarding Salem alumni currently on NCAA rosters. The high school page and the middle school pages need a bit of work. That's, I'm going to be doing that over the summer. One thing I wanted to do was to track our alumni that are currently on NCAA rosters. So when you click that page, this is what you see. So these are all of our alumni that are currently on NCAA rosters. Today I posted on Facebook about Tommy Beauregard, who's doing very well at Wheaton College. And the traffic we got was fantastic. We got, by the time I came here, we had 70 likes and five shares and a bunch of comments. When you click on the athlete's name, it takes you right to his page at Wheaton College. Click on, so these are our spring athletes, our winter athletes, and our fall athletes. So when you click on Isabella Cunha's profile, the women's soccer page, Isabella pops up in case folks want to find out how she's doing. And now I can't get back to the page. So that's that. So I did this, I contacted all of our coaches to see, hey, how many, how many kids do you have that are currently on NCAA rosters? Can you send me your list? And they were great about, about getting me that information. I also, on my first day of work here, I also created Google Alerts. These are really effective, where anytime Salem Public Schools or Salem High School is mentioned on the internet, I get an email. I get a daily email every time it's mentioned. So I've been able to find out a lot of cool things about alumni, what they're doing and where they are through Google Alerts. And what's cool is I know of no other school system that does this. So I'm really excited to grow this page and, and add new athletes next year, and it's, it's really going to be fun. If I can navigate back, there we go. And if you scroll down a little bit further, I've got a tab here that says, "How Salem Public Schools Promotes Community Athletics Leagues." So down here, I've got links and logos to every league in Salem. And this is really cool. Remember Cordell, I think you were the one that got the ball rolling on. Member Cordell, I think you were the one that got the ball rolling on, I saw a social media post and it said, it was during the Super Bowl madness, and it said, "We need more of this." And I totally agree, 'cause I had that experience in high school and everybody should be a part of that. So, one of the things we wanted to do is strengthen our relationship with the leagues of Salem. And we offered, I reached out to four presidents of Salem leagues, like Salem Little League and Softball, Witch City Soccer, Witch City Flag Football, and Salem Beverly Baseball there. And I said, "Listen, we wanna help you. Tell me when your registrations are. We can use our communications platform to expand your reach, to get as many kids signed up as possible." And they were great about it. I got a great, actually this morning I emailed everyone of the presidents to say, to ask, "Did this help you?" And I got the best message back from Witch City Flag Football. They had 50 new kids playing from last fall. That's 50 additional families that are playing new sports. That's, that made my week. It's only Monday. Witch City Soccer, I offered to do two emails. One to announce registration was open, and then in the final weeks, to do another blast to say, "Hey, registration's closing on this date, register now." For Witch City Soccer, I didn't even have to do that. I emailed the president of Witch City Soccer and said, "Do you want me to do another blast to get more kids?" And he said, "No, we're at capacity. The first one worked." Thank you so much. So that was, that was great. It's making a difference. We want every kid on the field. So that's that, with how we're trying to make inroads, strengthen relationships with the community. It's a great, great initiative. The second part of my presentation is regarding an alumni initiative. Let me navigate to that page here. Okay. And I created this page, "Once a Witch, Always a Witch," and it's got some pretty cool features on it. We found, we have a Salem Public Schools LinkedIn page. It's got about 700 followers, which is great. We found, three months ago, a Salem High School LinkedIn page with 2,500 followers, except nobody had access. So after about six weeks of trying and failing to get access to this page, I found somebody who knew somebody who knew somebody, and I got a name at LinkedIn, and within an hour we had access to this page. So it's got 2,500 followers. When we got access, now we're over 2,600 followers on the Salem High School LinkedIn page, which is gonna be great for the alumni initiatives, for connecting with more alumni. It's gonna be great. And it's got, let me see, it's got a link to Facebook here, the guest speaking link. Mario Soza is very big on bringing back alumni to speak to our kids, especially in CTE. So I'm really gonna promote this to get alumni back to speak. We have not advertised this, this page yet, but we will in a matter of weeks, see where that goes. I got a good feeling, think it's gonna be great. We're gonna use LinkedIn to post job opportunities, both on the Salem Public Schools page and the Salem High School page. Where, if you scroll down a little bit, we want alumni to tell us their news. We want, we wanna hear what they're doing. We wanna hear about promotions. We wanna hear about awards won. We wanna hear about if they're featured in a publication. Just basically enabling us to brag about Salem alumni. We've created a mailing list, if you, well, we're in the process of creating a mailing list. If you scroll down, fill out this quick form, and we're gonna start, we think we're gonna be able to do it by the, before the end of the summer, an alumni mailing list with news, maybe a feature. We're gonna try to gain as many emails as we can once we start advertising this. And another thing I wanna point out is this link all the way to the right, Salem Alumni in the News. And this is just a page I created that has any alumni news whatsoever. Our latest post is, is about the great alumni artist Miguel Cruz, class of 2009. Got a lot of traffic off him working with the students at Bentley. Through a Google, my Google, my Google updates that I get every day, I found out we have a former championship professional boxer, class of 2006, Matt Dory, who recently fought for the title again. Did not, did not win the title this time, but he is a former New England champion. And we also get, I find cool announcements like, January 12th, Salem Students Honored at Hamilton Hudson, Ohio Wesleyan. We find out what, how our students are doing academically, making the honor roll at their colleges, which is great. So we're really excited about the possibilities of these pages. Some, some future things down the road, I talked about the newsletter and just, we're trying to build an audience. And we want to do a prominent alumni page where we list alumni and what they've done after their tenure at Salem Schools. I think that's got a lot of possibilities. There's quite a few out there. I've already started compiling a list of prominent alumni, a couple of which in this room, and looking forward to taking advantage of that. So that's what we're working on, and it's just filled with possibilities. And I am wide open to suggestions. I think it's consistent with the strategic plan as far as belonging and strengthening our foundation. And I need your help. I need suggestions. I need, I need everyone to look at it with a critical eye, to look at the website as a whole with a critical eye, 'cause the best websites are never finished products. They're, they're always building, always evolving. So at this point, I'd love to hear some questions, some suggestions.
Hey, can I add two? So just, I know Beth Angelison wants to be the president of the Alumni Association. I'm just kidding.
Hard.
So just, just on another note, I did wanna also just point out on athletics, the intermural sports program is really booming here at Collins Middle School. And Evy Kendall has done a fabulous job of recruiting a lot, a very diverse group. And in the case of volleyball right now, it's almost all young girls or, you know, young women who are playing and coming out without fail. To see what we saw Friday, and there were a lot of teachers from Collins here, I really wanna shout them out too for rooting on. It's a great feeling to be here on a Friday afternoon to see the games. I encourage anybody to attend. And right now at Collins, 33%, a third of the kids are playing sports, which is great to see, and particularly students that have never played organized sports before. And we wanna thank the Play Ball Foundation who's helping to support. And we have a lot, a lot of the coaches are our teachers, our paraprofessionals who work in the school. And it is really encouraging to see, you know, we started soccer, intermural soccer, basketball, and now volleyball, which is by far the most popular sport. But Evy deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the work that she's done too, and not just to Collins, but we have Salt and Stall students who are coming over for that as well. So just wanna call that out. And that's all good for us as a school system, as we get more and more youth involved. We really do have to build up girls' sports at Salem High School. It has been problematic for us. A lot of it is that there isn't, not enough girls are playing early on, and we've gotta continue to get our young women. I know there's talk of doing a Girls in Sports Day this summer. I know Riley Christie has been planning that with Angie Giancola, which we're very excited about. But that is work that we have to continue to do as a system. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you and the committee.
Members have any comments or questions for Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris. Number one, for putting together the presentation and the overview of the website, but also for your, your passion. I think it's, it's evident that you're really enjoying the work that you're doing. I think with respect to just suggestions on the, the Call to Alumni page, you know, one of the requests that I often get from educators, including those in the CVTE programs, is around participation on the advisory boards. So I wonder if there could be an additional beyond just the, the speaking, just like a sign up for an advisory board? So whether it's, you know, one of our school site councils, one of our advisory boards for CVTE, just an opportunity for folks to engage in some type of service to the district. That might be a good opportunity. And then I, I guess the one thing that I'm, I'm curious about are, about whether or not there's opportunities for using that page also for professional opportunities, so for our students. So just thinking about like maybe a tab that says like, interested in like hosting a student like at your company or something, as you were talking about, kind of LinkedIn. You know, I just think about like, what are the easy things that, if I was an alumni, which I am, if I'm going here and I'm thinking about like, what are the things that I would immediately wanna do across these three tabs? You know, certainly LinkedIn, Facebook, guest speaking, but I also think the opportunity to be able to connect folks with my employer would be, would be good too.
Sure, excellent.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts, and sometimes I don't believe what comes out of my own mouth, but I have nothing against athletics for kids, absolutely nothing. And, you know, I played myself in high school and college, and I coached in high school at Salem High and at Finwick. But it does worry me when I hear things like, "We want every kid on a field." 'Cause I don't want every kid on a field, because every kid doesn't wanna be on a field. And I really think that we're missing the boat when we have this big push in the websites and the new websites and the additional websites and the LinkedIn websites. And it's all athletics and it's all competitive pretty much. And I'm not against it, I'm against that it's the only. And I understand things maybe take place, you have to start somewhere. So I don't have a problem that, that the website is an athletic website we're starting with, but I do have a concern with, that we don't get swept away with, "We want every kid on a field." We have students who excel in drama, we have students who excel in music, we have students who excel in art. You know, Nate Bertoni, who was a Salem Middle School and High School graduate, says, you know, has written a play and is, is, you know, out there on national TV, a play about his grandmother. You know, I can think of like, three kids off the top of my head who are in Off-Broadway right now. You know, the, the middle school and the high school have always had an extremely successful and progressive music program and drama programs. I think that we have work to do with some of the equity issues of those, particularly as the kids get older, but the programs are there, the kids' interest is there, but it is overshadowed when we only talk about getting the kids on fields. And I just, you know, I'm at the point where I'm not, I just don't wanna sit down and not say what I'm thinking. And what I'm thinking is, this is all well and good, but it's not all. It's not the end all. And I just, I just wanna throw that out there.
Let's, let's get together about that. I need to add those names to my list.
Well, it's a bigger picture though than adding five names. It's a, it's a mindset of, we need to be looking beyond the, the athletics. And I am not minimizing athletics at all. I just wanna think bigger. Thank you.
Just on that point, I think it is important to point out what is true, which is that there has been no shortage of support, publicity, or pride for music and the arts in this district over the past 10 to 15 years. And there has been very little support, pride, enthusiasm over our athletics. And so I do think there's a little bit of a rightsizing, but I totally agree with you, Member Manning, that like, I think there is now, as you say, like, you gotta start somewhere. So there is a good opportunity for us to be able to juggle those things all at the same time. But I, I do think that a rightsizing is happening here, so that, because to your point about equity, I think we have struggled a little bit with engaging all of our populations in, for example, music. And, you know, I think our sports programs ended up being a little bit more diverse, but I think getting all kids engaged in all of our programming is exactly what we should be aiming for. And just to, Chris, I just wanna say thank you, like, I think this, both of those initiatives go a long way toward kind of building up pride, culture, belonging, engagement, all of that. Then just on, on Member Cruz's point, I wonder too if there's a way, if we're engaging alumni to have like some kind of dropdown menu where people can check the things that they might be interested in doing. You know, like, would you be interested in coaching? Would you be interested in mentoring, being a substitute teacher, being a speaker? Just like if people would, if there's some way where particularly local folks could have an opportunity to be like, "All right, here's what I would do," and then we can kind of catalog them? You know, so that when we do need a coach, you know, or a substitute, or whatever people's interests are, we can, we at least have like kind of a pool of people to drop them.
Just something that might be worth reaching out or looking into. Boston is getting a women's professional soccer team. I was a soccer player for most of my career. And so I've been connecting with the founders and they're looking for districts that might have a large interest in soccer for things to partner with. They're doing a big partnership with BPS. It's very cool and very exciting. So they, when I originally talked to them, they were thinking Chelsea. I said, "Maybe look at Lynn in Salem." So I don't know, but they might be worth reaching out to as well.
I think the only other piece that I would just say, in response to Member Manning's, you know, good points just with respect to what gets listed on the department section, I just wonder if like that is the right tab as I look at the website where it says departments? If, if we're maybe missing an opportunity to put something around kind of engagement? So, 'cause I think right now as I look at it, it says about families, schools, departments. So as like you're navigating it, you might get lost that athletics is at the bottom of the page. So there's about like 10 different things that you can click on on my screen. So I just wonder if there should just be another kind of section that says engagement, and then you could do something like athletics at the Salem Public Schools, alumni Salem Public Schools, arts and culture at the Salem Public Schools, et cetera, rather than it kind of being situated in, in the department section? So that would just be another thing, just 'cause I see there's a lot, there's a lot that's already situated there. And I don't know if, you know, folks would immediately kind of hone in on like, that's where I would go for that landing page.
Anything else from the committee?
Oliver, I was, you took my, I was gonna express the, the concept of having connections for professional development and growth as well, so internships, things like that. I agree with Member Manning's point around, I think, using the space to amplify the successes and achievements of every, every alumni that we can identify, you know, regardless of the field that they're in. It's not a zero sum space, like we can, we can include it all. So I think it's, it's worth doing that. I think this is great. Really appreciate it and.
Thanks, Chris. And then just the last thing, this, this item, I'm going to, I'm gonna suggest that we move to the next school committee next week, because I do think it deserves more time and attention, but it's our efforts to engage the community around school configuration as well as school choice. In your package, you have a timeline that I shared with the building committee on Thursday evening, and I'm sharing with you. And what I plan, we plan to do some engagement with the community around middle, high school reconfiguration or configuration, and then elementary configuration, as we've discussed, following the master facilities plan. And then also school choice, which is something we discussed recently at the, at our retreat. And you charged me with engaging both the public at large, but also our school staffs around these topics. And so what I plan to do, this is just a overview of a timeline for engagement, but I plan next week to give you a little more details of what that will look like and get your feet, so I can get your feedback on that. And we hope to begin sometime in mid-May, which I know is a busy time, but we wanna try to get as much input as we can prior to the end of the school year as we head into next year, because we've got some big decisions looming here around a new high school facility. And then of course, other, you know, the school choice has been a conversation that we've been having for a while here. And, you know, I know there's interest in the committee to get input from the community and then perhaps make some adjustments related to some of these important topics for the future of what school could look like in Salem. So I will come back to you next week with some more detail, but if you could, in between now and next week, take a look at the timeline. So with that, my comments are over, Mayor.
No student representative report. No items under old business, under new business, deliberation and vote on the FY25 budget. Open up to the members for comments, discussion, or questions.
Motion approved.
You have to read the items. Yes, you want to make the motion?
Motion to approve the recommended budget for $80,158,896.50.
I'll second.
So moved, under discussion. Member Cruz?
I just want to thank the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the members of the finance subcommittee for putting together this budget, and of course, all the folks that provided input on, on shaping it. And it goes without saying that I think a 4.3% increases, just given the fiscal climate is really generous, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for prioritizing public education in the city. I know that we stand well above net spending, and you coming into this role with all the different challenges that you have. There's a lot of focus on what we do in our schools, and I recognize you have other competing priorities, but thank you for your, your partnership and for making sure that our kids have what they need in this budget. So, you know, I think on my part, I'll just note that I'll, I'll be voting in, in support of the budget as I take a look at the areas of investment and the priorities. It's very clear to me that this is a good budget for Salem, for our kids, for our educators and our families. You know, in particular, I want to thank the superintendent for being flexible and coming up with the process that really did deeply engage a lot of different folks. I'll, I'll say that, you know, Salem is a community that's always been at the forefront of change. And when I examined this budget and the conversations we were having just three years ago during the pandemic about where we wanted to be at the end of kind of ESER and ARPA, you know, this is a budget that I think, you know, we're approaching that, we're, we're at that cliff. And we're able to maintain a lot of the great services that we've put in place, you know, whether it's the, the creation of the public pre-K program, which was just a pilot, expanding the middle school, the middle school pilot, creating greater access to our career voc tech programs, and then additionally, the dual enrollment and advanced coursework, and then the staffing. You know, I think it's a testament to, you know, our desire as a district to continue to layer on support. So I just want to express my gratitude. I know it's not an easy time for a lot of different decisions that had to be made, but I certainly see, you know, that this is a budget that was really thoughtfully put together. The only other pieces that I would just note from members of the committee is that, you know, we are beyond the chapter 70 allocation. There are some upcoming opportunities. We know this budget doesn't include the grants that I think the superintendent and the team continue to apply for, but I think Salem is well positioned to really continue to grow, especially around the early education field. In the House budget, we put about $15 million for new programs related to expanding public pre-K, so really following the governor's lead on trying to get all the gateway cities to offer universal access by 2026. So we're on that trajectory of being able to apply for that funding, and, you know, I continue to see it, and I know the mayor does as well, and members of the committee, when it comes to our other programs, career voc tech, early college, the middle school pilot at this district is continuing to look for resources outside of the budget to support that work. So I'll be voting in favor tonight, and just again, want to thank everybody for the efforts to put this one together.
Just wanted to add that I recently joined the finance committee and did not expect what I was coming into. But it was really, you know, interesting and also helpful to hear from school principals and, and leaders, and our director of DEI and family engagement. And there, I, I can also say that there seemed to be a lot of thought that went into this. I know that the committee members put a lot of thought and time into listening to the recommendations. So just wanted to add that.
What else? I just want to express my gratitude to Elizabeth and Steve and all the members of the city, the school staff who helped put this budget together and worked with the city team on it. In the 11-ish years I've been working with the city in different capacities, this was definitely, I think, has been one of the most challenging budget contexts that we've encountered, for a variety of reasons, and it's not just limited to the school department certainly. But I think that, you know, I'm enormously proud that we were able to have a level of investment in the city's appropriation to support this budget, exceeding the historical average. It's, you know, we always want more, and, you know, our partnership with the legislators is constantly asking for additional assistance, but I think we recognize that, you know, we're, we're investing in the areas where I think the greatest needs and the greatest impact are, especially around early education. But in, in all of our, in all of our schools and in all the grade levels, I think that this is a budget that reflects the values of the district, that values our educators, values the quality of education that's being provided, and values the future opportunities of every child to succeed and thrive. So.
Can I, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the support from the city. I mean, this is a tricky time for a lot of districts across the state, and we've gotten a lot of support, but it is as difficult. In my 10 years as superintendent, this is the most challenging I've seen in the state of Massachusetts. I do want to thank our school leaders and our department heads who worked really hard to be thoughtful and strategic and match their decisions to their school improvement plans and to the district's strategic plan. They worked closely, they listened to their staff. I mean, there's no, I mean, there's no winning when you have to make some tough decisions, but they did so in trying to be responsive to what they heard from families, what they heard from their staffs, and to try to continue to build on the good work that's happening. So I do want to thank our school leaders and our department heads, all of whom are here either virtually or in person. Because this is, yeah, this is not a, this isn't a pretty process by any stretch. And I, I also, you know, we have a lot of work to do ahead of next year, and we've got to start now in thinking about, we've got some issues with, you know, our reserves. We're counting on too much one-time money. And so we need to start thinking now about how we set ourselves up for less pain a year from now as well. And so that's going to take all of us to roll up our sleeves. We've got to get creative, we've got to rely on some grant funds as well, see what's available, and then make some, continue to make strategic decisions. Because we, I mean, unless something substantially changes, you know, this is, times are tough in the state of Massachusetts right now. And, and, you know, certainly I worry about our enrollment declining because of the, the loss of the migrant students who have moved out already. We've just got to hope that more and more students continue to roll in the Salem Public Schools and that we work together to make this an attractive place for people to want to work and for people to want to send their kids to go to school. So I, again, I appreciate the work of all our district and school leaders, because this is, this has not been, it's much easier when you're told you can add, you know, and this wasn't a year where we could add. We had to make some difficult decisions and make some trades and swaps and some cuts. And so I'm very appreciative of the work that's gone into it.
Member Cruz?
And Superintendent, I'm glad you raised the point about the one-time revenues and some of the deficits that we're seeing. I did forget to give members of the committee one update that was related to the budget that the House was working on. So there was an amendment to try to tackle some of the inflationary costs with respect to the Student Opportunity Act. I think folks will remember, we got an email from the Haverhill School Committee members that had passed a resolution. I think there was a few of us that, I know the superintendent attended with Senator Roderick, who's here, the chair of Ways and Means on the Senate side. What we've heard so far is that there, because of where things currently stand with the Student Opportunity Act, you know, we're four, six of the way in terms of implementation. We've blown kind of past the, the original kind of projection about what would be allocated in the Student Opportunity Act. It doesn't seem like there's a desire to open up the chapter 70 formula. There is a lot of consideration for that. I think there's probably going to be another commission at some point that gets established to look at the second half of what wasn't done with respect to our rural schools, minimum aid, schools that are below effort and, and getting those increments. So, you know, down the line, I think there will be another opportunity to kind of examine it, but my understanding from both Chair Roderick and Chair Michaelowitz is a loud and clear message that with respect to that inflationary piece on the state side, that's not something that they're going to be taking a look at, but they are going to be using, you know, the, the millionaire's tax money to continue to kind of provide some layers of additional support. So I'm happy to send members of the committee just kind of like an update on, you know, where we landed on the House side, but I know the Senator and I are trying to plan kind of a joint city council, school committee meeting where we would let you all know kind of where things land at the end of the process. But I just wanted to put that piece out there, because you may have seen it kicking around just with respect to that inflationary piece, but it's, it doesn't look like there's more relief that's coming on the way. So.
On that happy note, I mean, I, so I'll. Take this opportunity to express like, the extreme frustration with Salem was the only gateway city to be a minimum aid community in FY23. The formula is clearly not functioning correctly. The inflationary consideration is, is one thing.
Yep.
But there are other factors that have impacted the city in the past. So we're four, six of the way through SOA, and I feel like we missed a window. We missed one of those years because of that, that broken formula. And, and the district has done, I think, some remarkable work to slow the, the pace of the ramp down from ESER by using some of our reserves and, and one-time funds. That's not a sustainable practice. It's less than ESER. It buys us some more time to kind of gradually plan for the, for the, the budget that we all want to see. But to your point, Dr. Strick, the work for FY26 starts tomorrow. And has actually already started in many respects, that this is, this is a part of a longer process. And I'm hopeful the legislature will keep an open mind about cities and towns that have been impacted by, I think, some inequities in that formula. On the motion to approve the recommended budget for FY25 for some public schools of
Roll call?
For roll call vote? Go down the roll. Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Matter carries seven, zero. Finance, finance and operations report.
I have no report.
Now you don't, okay. Subcommittee reports? Finance and, from the finance subcommittee. Personnel?
Member Campbell? I have one from the curriculum subcommittee. The curriculum subcommittee met last week to discuss class rank, I almost said rank choice voting. That's not at all what we discussed. We discussed class rank and its implications for Salem High School, and the committee felt that it was a discussion that the larger committee should have. I believe it's on the agenda for a main meeting, and then ahead of that, information will be sent out by the principal to the Salem High Community, so that if, if they're interested in tuning in, they can be sure to do that. So that's all we've got.
Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to accept policies 2110, 2200, and 5103 for first reading.
I'll second.
Under discussion?
I can just kind of briefly summarize. Sorry, just. Sorry. We, for policy 2110, we just cut out some unnecessary language about reporting outs from the superintendent, which would seem just unnecessary unless we asked him to. So we, we basically just edited that, that to get rid of unnecessary language. For policy 2000, we, I think this is also wording, one where we were just trying to make this a little bit more clear and streamline the superintendent's responsibilities. And we also had to make a title change from Director of Pupil Personnel to Director of Special Education, and adding in the Director of Nursing to the pool of folks that the school committee establishes and fix compensation for. We, as we noted at a past school committee meeting, we needed to revise the policy around school choice to indicate that the superintendent has the ability to set enrollment targets for Bentley Academy Innovation School annually in consultation with the school committee. And I believe that's it.
No further discussion, questions? Passed for first reading of those three policies, all in favor. Opposed, the matter carries. School committee concerns and resolutions.
Member Cornell?
I can just get an update on the committee of the whole meeting that we had before this meeting. Where we were discussing the policies around naming and renaming of schools and parts of schools. There's a lot to consider, and I think we all agree that we have to have a clear policy or, not policy, we do have a clear policy, but we need a process that we communicate clearly, clearly to the community. So our next step as a school committee is to survey the community on their thoughts about naming, how we should name, what we should consider, generally what folks think about the appropriateness of, and meaning of names, whether that's a school building or a part of building. And that survey is going to help to inform our effort to develop a clear process. And I think this, our next step is for to survey the community and then for the policies committee to start thinking about language around a process.
Anything else from school committee members?
I just wanted to revisit the superintendent's memo earlier this month just regarding the Salem falling into the bottom 10% of districts with respect to our charter seats. I just wanted to note for folks that I talked to the superintendent earlier today, I had a brief conversation with one of the chairs of the education subcommittee, committee on the Senate side, Jason Lewis, and he had mentioned that he's engaging in conversations with DESI about how they're arriving kind of at the conclusion, like what their formula is. So DESI, I think, has been consistent over the years, and I think both the superintendent and I agree that they've used just kind of the, the growth percentiles and the achievement data to kind of make those determinations. But it seems like there's some conversations happening kind of at the state level between the two education committee chairs and DESI about how they're arriving at that particular kind of designation, because they're not taking a look at the full accountability system. So I just want to note that for members of the committee, you know, if there's any additional information that comes about on that, I'll be sure to share out. As folks know, we've made a lot of substantial progress in so many different areas of the full accountability system. So whether we're talking about chronic absenteeism, access to dual enrollment and advanced coursework, graduation rates, I think folks saw the update that came from the superintendent in that regard. So there, I think, needs to be some more engagement with the state on that regard in terms of just how we're getting to that conclusion is, you know, what's on the horizon is beyond our conversations of reconfiguration is, I, I think the concern that I hold as a committee member, that some operator might look at a community like Salem and say that they want to open some additional seats, and that could have some implications down the line. And I know the superintendent has talked ad nauseam about that, but I just wanted to, to show that particular concern and that update.
If I could, I just, I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, and I, I didn't forget, I just got like waylaid, I think, by having the cow first and, et cetera. But I just want to point out that, and it seems like I'm doing this every meeting now, but this Salem Public Schools lost another longtime employee a couple of weeks ago now, and, and we had the hearing and then missed a week. So Teresa Miskevich, who was at the high school for many, many years, and her sister Christine actually before her, or with her, but Christine passed away several years ago, but Teresa passed away about three weeks ago, and was a formidable force, I think is a fair way to assess her at, at the, at the. to assess her at, at the, at the school. Longtime, um, born in Salem, you know, ten kids in the family, I think, or twelve. And just, uh, lived and breathed, um, Salem High School, um, at the time called Foreign Languages, and now we probably call it World Languages. But, um, I think she would, it would be fair to say she epitomized what we say that we're looking for in, in rigor. Um, those of you that had her, knew her, worked with her, that might, might, um, un- understand more fully. But, um, actually below that rigor was a very kind person who, when she retired, went on to spend several years on the school committee. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge her passing at some weight. Thank you.
Call for a brief moment of silence.
Thank you, Member Manning. Anything else?
Uh, I'll share one quick update. Um, the city's Scholarship and Education Committee has money to give away to students, uh, from Salem who are going on to college. The application is due May tenth, uh, and the website is salemma.gov/scholarship. So, uh, if you know any students who are heading off to higher education, uh, please consider applying.
It's not for you, but I know. Can I actually add to that? Um, speaking of scholarships, uh, Mass Nahro, N-A-H-R-O, is the acronym. Um, also has a scholarship, the deadline to apply is May third. Um, and this is for students that, um, live in public housing and check, uh, the requirements on the website. Um, again, it's Mass Nahro, uh, but just wanted to add that.
Anything further, if not?
I just want to say, uh, next week is Educator Appreciation Week. So we got to make sure we get the message out to everyone that we celebrate. And in Salem, we do it for everybody, all educators. Cause as we say in our strategic plan, everybody who works in front of kids are educators. And so, uh, just note the next week is, uh, should be our celebration of educator appreciation across the Salem Public Schools. Um, and so just want to acknowledge that, although we do have a meeting next Monday too, so we can shout it out again.
Great.
Member Cruz?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Under discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? The matter carries. Your adjourn. Thank you.